Okay, good evening, we'll get started. Thank you all for joining us here tonight for our regularly scheduled monthly public hearing. Please be reminded when you come up, you have three minutes to provide any feedback, concerns that you have, and just state your name and address for the record. So without further ado, we'll get right into it. I have Weston Olridge, Olridge, apologies if I messed up the last name.
That's quite all right. Weston Ulbrich. I'm with the Greater Hartford Twilight Baseball League, and we've been in action for 90 years now, going back to 1929. And some of us have gotten together in our executive committee, which is led by Bill Hallowaty of Eastern Connecticut Baseball. You might have heard the name before, but we want to name or suggest to have the new park at Colt Park named after Johnny Taylor, who was a hometown hero and still really should be recognized as a hometown hero. He was a great pitcher in the Negro leagues during the '30s and '40s, and he was actually Hartford's first professional athlete who was a minority. So having said that, I don't see any Johnny Taylor commemoration around the city except for maybe a few events that have taken place, like his daughter Lynette Taylor Grand, her name is. She threw out the first pitch at the first Yard Goats game on, it was spring of 2017. So in honor of his great career and his legacy that he's left, I would move to have the field be dedicated to him, to Johnny Taylor Field at Colt Park, because as you know, they're renovating the whole park, including the baseball field, which is the only enclosed field right now, field number nine at Colt Park. One thing I could say about him, about Johnny Taylor through my research, because I'm the secretary of the league and I do a lot of baseball research, very nerdy. He was once let into Bulkley Stadium in the '30s with a police guard, because the vitriol was so strong among some baseball fans that thought only, you know, white people should be playing at the stadium. So the police guard let him in and he pitched, and he won the game for the Savitt Gems, led by Bill Savitt, who was a jeweler in Hartford at the time. So it's a good thing to do, I think, and our league involving about 350 people, I think it's a good idea. So TJ Clark, Councilman, has helped me get to this point here and suggested that I speak. So thank you TJ, and thank you all for your public service.
Thank you. Angela Harris?
Good evening. My name is Angela Harris. I'm here representing the North Hartford Promise Zone and the Health Initiative, various entities that work in the health work group. And I would just like to speak to you once again, as I did in April, regarding the CDBG grant funding, the federal funding allocation. I would implore you to review the packets that you all provided, and thank you for sharing the extra one with me. I again speak to you regarding open communication with the public, the residents and businesses here in Hartford, and clear transparency. I did speak with the Office of Grants Administration, and they will be forwarding along some of the guidelines that are be used, that were used to rate the various applications. The applications are still not available online. You still have to come down to City Hall during business hours, when most people are either trying to run their business or go to work to make a living, to just see the applications. It's a public, federal process. We shouldn't have to file an appeal for, you know, information. So I'd ask that you would review the information and look at the equitable allocation of those funds. Throughout the city, there are some agencies that were not given the amount that they requested. I won't call any names, because there are a few of them. I would also ask that you would look at the funds that are not used this fiscal year 1920, and if there's the ability to roll over that money to agencies that could use it this year, or hold it over for use next year, that you would look at that and the equitable distribution of those funds as well. I would also have you note that this is a proposal, and you as City Council have an opportunity to go alongside the mayor's recommendation and make adjustments before it is submitted to HUD. And I would ask that you would use all those rights and privileges as council members to do such. Because this is a joint process with you and the mayor's office, we'd ask that you would represent those that you are serving throughout the city and make this a transparent process, continue with sharing information. I understand that this is a lot better than it has been in the past, and I would ask you to continue to review the process so that we can continue to fine tune it, so that folks are more apt to apply, because a few agencies don't even want to be involved because the process is so arduous, and they have to do a lot of reporting and pay the money upfront and be reimbursed. So if your balance sheets don't allow, you can't take advantage of this program. So I just ask you to take a look before you vote and act on behalf of the folks that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Hammond?
Hi, Leslie Hammond, Winlande Place. Good evening. I'm really proud of Claudine, and Will DeLeese, and Agnes, and Jennifer for putting this book together and having all the awesome, awesome, awesome community hearings about the drones. And, you know, it just was great. Of course, you know, I love hearing from the public. I wish this place was packed, but I'm glad my fellow activists are here. But I love hearing the comments from the community, and as you all know, it was so much bigger than the drones, even though the whole privacy and everything about the drones came up. It was more that people really loved the community conversation and wanted to hear it more for housing and all different kinds of things. So I know it took a lot of work, I realize that, but I really urge you to keep doing that. So a few other things on my mind. Johnny Taylor, Pat Anderson, his niece just passed, and she's like one of my closest friends. So thank you TJ for proposing that, and I think it's really important. She told me a lot of stories about him, and I'm in touch with his daughter, and she was really happy to hear that and hoping to come to the public meeting. There is a picture of him at the Yard Goats, which I was thrilled that the Yard Goats made that connection, but I think it's really important for us. So I'm in part of a group with Batterson Park, and we're trying to bring that forward to the council. I've been involved over the years with opening up the beaches, and I really believe in public access for kids, and here's a beach 20 minutes away. That's our beach, it's our city beach, and there's a group that we have our nonprofit status, and we've met with Walter from Public Works. It's just a matter of getting your blessing for the name and to work with Public Works to make it happen, so we can make that beach accessible to city kids and families. And, you know, it's going to take some time, because I know we don't have any money, but I really, it's an awesome, awesome beach. We're going to take a walk there in a couple weeks, hopefully it won't be raining, and show Walter why we're so excited about it, because it's like acres of land. It's just, it's just amazing. Like you get out there and you're like, I can't believe I'm 20 minutes from Hartford. So please try to pay attention to that if you can. I'm still focused on the police. I'm very disappointed on the way they have dealt with the situation with Kelly Braga. She was an amazing person that recruited a lot of Hartford police people, a lot of women, and now she's at home while they're, I don't know what they're doing, but they had their internal affairs, which really is not going to do a fair review of what's going on in the toxic police department. And also, they hired some employer-based firm that's not going to do a fair review. So please pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann? Oh, yes. And then Hyacinth?
One thing here. I was reading the full agenda package at home on my computer. I'm looking at number five, and I know this is something that John and Jimmy already voted on, on the Legislative Affairs Committee, about Hartford Public Access TV. Did you say anything to them that they really need to stop cutting back on their services? Are you guys back there? Yeah, there he is. Yeah, we're missing out a lot. Things are not being recorded and posted in a timely manner, and to keep cutting back on that is doing a disservice to a lot of people in this city. People who can't come to meetings, people who are homebound, people who might want to go back and review something that happened at a council meeting, public comments and hearings in particular. People want to know what their fellow residents are saying. To limit access to that is not good. I know that we have cut back on their funding previously, and it hasn't really made a heck of a lot of difference. Maybe the management over at HPA TV needs to be looked at. Maybe they are not using what funding they are receiving properly. And I'd like you all to just pay a little attention to that, because it is a public service, and it's an important public service. And now I would like to address item number one on the agenda, about the Board of Education surplus, which is approximately $2.5 million. To have it go back to the board rather than into, I guess, the city's general fund, or something similar to that is where it would usually go. And I'm in favor of that, but I want to take it a step further. I want to make sure that not one penny of that $2.5 million goes to support any kind of salaries at central office. We got a big problem there. Been doing the numbers, got the printouts of the payroll, and for over, people who make over $100,000 a year, only the ones who make over $100,000 a year in central office, out of the approximately 200 employees there, that's about 130 to 140 people, their payroll is estimated at between $17 and $18 million a year before benefits, before benefits. I'm happy for them that they're living so well, but I'm really happy, give me a second, please, that our schools are still in deep trouble. We're not seeing results from central office. We are not seeing improvements in our school system. It's worse than ever. I'd like to see part of that, I'd like to see half a million dollars of that money. I'd like all of you to say, we'll give it back, but we want part-time librarians hired for the public schools that have not had librarians for years. You're doing the children a disservice. No librarians? What is this? Is this a third world country? I don't think so. Half a million dollars could do a lot of good by providing the professional services of librarians, because if there's anything our kids need, it is more access to books and learning outside of the mandated classroom. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Thank you so much. So do I interpret you correctly that you want to have this refund, this supplement for the Board of Education conditional?
Yes.
Conditional on, right. Are there any other conditional things you might suggest, for instance, health education or gym?
No. Right now, I am only going, I'm going to start small, and I'm going to say we are, there are many schools. The superintendent of schools herself, a few weeks ago, was recorded and quoted as saying, yes, she knows librarians are important, but there's no money in the budget to hire them. Of course, there's no money in the budget for art teachers, for music teachers, for bands, for any of that wonderful extracurricular stuff that counts towards a full education instead of just teaching to the test. So yes, I'd like to start out small. I would like you to say, we want some librarians. We want some librarians in the schools that have libraries, and by the way, they're not being cared for either, because there are no librarians. We want them there. It's important for our kids.
Right. Very good, thank you.
That's what I'm saying.
We can certainly try that.
Thank you.
A conditional award.
Hyacinth?
Good evening, everyone. It's a very bleaky evening out there. I hope you're all doing well. So I want to do some good news first, before I get into the school, because that's a whole total crisis there. I want to say, you know, last week, I look at our street. We had a cleanup on Saturday, the 4th of May, but after that, I've noticed our street really clean. And I have commend the new Public Works Director, because I had told him, you know, we can't send the guys out to sweep at 12 o'clock in the day, because cars are parking on the street. But so actually, I told him, I said, you know, it actually looked clean in the city, and I'm feeling good. And that's the kind of sense I want, okay, that we all drive around, walk around, and feel the place is clean. I mean, what else could make us feel better than, clean street? And then I've been asking for months or months to get the Pope Park vent clean in the gym, and then that takes a little while, but it was done. So, no, it makes you feel really good that things are getting done. Our playgrounds are redo-overs, we're getting new basketball, you know, courts in the park in Goodwin Park, and the tennis court is getting done, and so there's some really good stuff moving along. So I'm hoping we can continue to move those things along and make it. The other thing I'm asking for, and I've asked for it maybe a year ago, was to make sure we have a nice, beautiful entrance for Goodwin Park. Like every one of the other parks has a nice entrance, but only Goodwin Park doesn't have a good entrance. So I'm hoping that we can figure out, find a little, it shouldn't take all that much money to get done. So I'm hoping that can get done. So I just want to tell you that, oh, the only problem we have now is those big fat potholes, and I'm hoping there's some funding for paving and doing so, but I suppose everything takes time. But I want to talk a little bit about what Ann says about our school. I'm not sure how many of you are in tune with our schools, but we are in a crisis in Hartford Public School. Throwing more money at Hartford Public School, can you believe Classical Magnet, the school that we love and was one of the top schools in the city, is probably at the bottom now? They, I heard they closed the library in the school. Can you believe that? So I'm hoping that money that's going back to them is going to go for good use. You know, you just walk into Hartford High, and the kids are always there, walking in the hall, and I'm saying, how do any of these kids learn? Uh-huh? And these are the things that's happening, I think maybe Buckley, but Hartford High is a star in school for that. So I'm hoping you guys don't just figure out that I need to focus on just this, but also focus on the education and what it is that's happening to our children in these schools. So please try to look into that. I appreciate it, and thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Raquel? And then Isabel?
Good evening, everyone. Southern Hartford, Raquel Calderon. The good news that I have is that the bill passed for $15 minimum, but it's going to go by increments of $1.20 every year until 2023, and they are working right now in And I'm going to make sure that, to be, you know, I would like to see tolls everywhere. I would be supporting tolls at the entrances and exits of New York City, Rhode Island, Massachusetts. I don't think they should put any tolls in the state of Connecticut. We have enough taxes and everything else we have to pay. As far as the police department, I think the police department, the officers are doing a great job. I see them coming along, catching all these kids that are stealing cars, and the percentage went down. I think they're really doing a good job, and I think it's momentum to start, not to bedmouth the police department, because when we need protections, those are the ones who comes for us. And, you know, there's just a lot of opinions about police officers, but I have good ones, and you know I'm strict, I'm always watching, and when I see something wrong, I say it. I don't keep quiet. The other thing that I want to talk, since I heard about the Board of Education, oh my God, that's deplorable. There needs to be cleaning house from the top to the bottom. I do not blame the children, but I, someone, it's not only the schools at fault, the kids have cell phones. They are watching YouTube, inappropriate dance, they playing games, and they don't want you to take it away from them. They don't want to pay attention to the teacher. It doesn't matter who it is, whether they yellow, red, black, white, they don't want to listen. And we should not be talking about racism. It has to do with the technology. And even when they have their computer right in front of them, an Apple computer, uh-uh, they are on their cell phones. They hiding it, they texting to the other classmates somewhere else, hey, let's meet around the corner, let's be here. I see it every day, everywhere, more than anybody else. I go everywhere. So it's a disaster. The technology is a disaster. Even for these constituencies, I see them walking like zombies with their cellphone in the street. It's a shame, shame. You know, we need to start telling them to bring those little, those little phones when they need it for their parents, the flip-flop, never mind this other phone, because you know that's destroying the kids. Education is going down 60% of absenteeism. This is, they only go to school because their father and their mother force them, because they really don't want to go. So I'm not blaming only administration, and I'm not going to say who I'm blaming, but they better be honest and, you know, think about themselves, what they're doing with the children.
Thank you. Isabel?
Good evening. My name is Isabel Osorio, and I lived in Edward Street for many years in Hartford. I want to publicity Jimmy Sanchez, because he's the one, he was the only one willing to come to Edward Street and advocate for the cleaning of our street and fix the sidewalk. I live in front of the, on the Glover School, the beautiful school in the Edward Street. I want to show this.
Isabel, can you give it to Councilwoman Wench? And if she can pass it around, and you can go back to the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
I see nobody care. When I see the children and the mother work with the children in the street, because they don't use the sidewalk, and the only people is Jimmy, because the other people give me the bag. And many people in the street signs.
Okay.
Yes. For dear, for dear, I do this. What can I do? You try to ask somebody, and they're willing to give the bag. They don't see it.
Gracias.
They need only both.
Through you, Council President, I just want to clarify. So it's been an issue on Edward Street where she's been trying to communicate with several departments and folks, and there were two to three blighted properties with mattresses and garbage, trash, you name it. One property had a fire where it was boarded up, and then Isadore reached out to me, and I responded. I went over there and I took some photos. I was a, you know, very, you know, it's upsetting sight, and it's across the street from the Quirk Middle School. It's a beautiful school, and so from that point on, I kept in touch with her, and every time she, there's an issue, she would communicate with me. And then, so DPW did a great job in going out there after they received my email and cleaned everything up, cut the grass. Right now, the grass and the shrubs are tall. Some folks are, you know, upset with her for some odd reason. All she's doing is a great job in trying to keep that street clean. There shouldn't be no reason why any streets in our city should have to endure this kind of garbage piling up and not be addressed. So I'd like to thank Isadore for her great job, and also she did get a petition signed of everyone that lives on that street, because they're concerned, and there's children that literally walk by this garbage that's basically is dangerous. There's also a building that I actually scaled up the staircase in the back, and I had DPW block it off, because it's a situation which is dangerous when one of our children can go up there, play around, and fall off. So that's all been addressed, and that's what she wants to share.
Okay. So has it been addressed?
Yes, it has been addressed. It has been addressed. I went several times and took more photos.
Yeah, but I think there may be ongoing issues, because there's property owners that are not responsive, so we need to make sure that Laura and the blighted prop, that it's on the blighted property list, and she's following up with that as well.
And that has been done. Thank you.
That is correct. It's not the city's fault, it's not the mayor's fault, it's the property owners. They need to be accountable. I am a property owner, and I'm accountable of what's going on around my property.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Clark?
Thank you, through you, Madam President. Edward Street has historically have had issues, going back to the Perez administration and beyond, with absentee landlords, and so I do believe that these properties are now being enforced regarding through the blight remediation process. And so I would encourage all residents, for whatever that you are seeing in other streets, please send that over, not just to us, but also to Laura Stottermeyer, so that it can be put on the blight remediations team for that to be taking place.
Yes, thank you. So that concludes our public comment section for the night. We'll convene at 7:00 PM for our regular scheduled council meeting. Thank you.
[inaudible]
So what we're going to do is take this book.
Hey, wait, let's, what did you say? Well, I got accused, because I'm, let's see.
The call Public Works, make sure they go.
So this is Amy Anderson.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.